The regular town council meeting this 13th day of February 2023.
Are we doing CRA first?
We're going to do the CRA first. But if everybody would please stand up, we're proud to have with us Father Vincent Clemente from the St. James Catholic Church, who's going to lead us in our prayer and pledge.
We pray that you, dear heavenly father, we pray that you guide our town of Lake Placid, and all year today may reflect your will. We pray for your guidance. In the council deliberation, we pray that you will be inspiration so that they may govern this town, Lake Placid, with wisdom and courage. We ask your protection, Lord, so that all are safe in the city of Lake Placid. We pray for protection from continuing threat of COVID-19 pandemic. We pray we soon return to our lives on normalcy, so we're able to live our lives in peace. We ask for your guidance, strengthen and prayerful hope, for your divine inspiration, so we may do the best for the city of Lake Placid and for one another. Bless all us here today, and bless this city of Lake Placid, so we may continue to thrive and grow. We ask this through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
The Father, Son, and God.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay, first, we're going to do the Lake Placid CRA. I'll ask the mayor to call the order.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay. Consent agenda one.
Move to approve consent agenda one. Second.
Got a motion to second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
All right, item number two, Stewart Park.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure where Stewart Park should be in the agenda part on the regular council meeting, because it has elements of both things. As council decides, they may want to use the CRA funds. I know we've been trying to get some electrical quotes from central contracting. Those have not come in yet, and we can't put them in front. But there was some discussion of that $40,000 in the CRA budget was directed towards the railroad tracks, improving the railroad tracks, the alleyway along with the excavation point back behind the alleyway, and that those funds may be better served, council's choice, to do some improvements in Stewart Park. And I know I sent out some sidewalk emails and everything recently, but that's, I don't think that has to come under the CRA. Town staff is addressing that, and we're doing the safety monitoring and stuff like that to go along. We got the same old problem with that cobblestone walkway and everything, those trees, and it was, it's a tough, it's a tough sell to have a brick sidewalk. I think that's been pointed out every time we brought it up, but we stay on top of it and try to keep it clean. So what I guess I'd like to do is to figure out, and I got some elements over in, as you see, Stewart Park is under my agenda over on the regular agenda, but I wasn't sure what council would want to address in terms of the CRA and in terms of that. So I'll leave it up to county town council to decide that, however how y'all want to approach it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I see Rachel's not here, but if I read this correctly, the CRA has or had, was projecting to have $156,000, and we've, and even with this alleyway project, we were still had a $111,000, I don't want to call it, but in other words, that's the money we have to assign to projects, right?
Right, and it already has the $40,000 out, I believe. So the $111,000 would be after those projects.
Right. And so, I mean, I guess my point is, and what you all told us in the past is that when we have these CRA funds, we need to expend most of them. We should not just be allowing a big pot of money to
Correct.
accumulate. Is that still accurate?
Still accurate.
And so I guess to Phil's point, even if we, even when, even if we wanted to leave the alleyway project to be done, when all of the work is finally completed at Journal Plaza, we still have enough money to spend some in Stewart Park. And I think that since Stewart Park is basically the center of that CRA area in making infrastructure enhancements there benefits that entire area, that's a very appropriate place, whether it's spending a couple of grand, if we, if, if we decide to remove the shuffleboard courts or to enhance electric or do other, you know, do some stuff with sidewalks. I mean, I think we ought to primarily use CRA money for enhancements to that area. And apparently, we have the money to do it, and so I would, I would think we ought to ask staff to come back to us with a projected budget or budgets for repairs or enhancements to that area for us to consider, especially since we have somewhere in north of $100,000 to expend in the next six, eight months.
I expect, and there again, Alan did not get the quote back. We talked about it at the staff meeting this morning. He didn't get the quote back, or that would be in front of you now. So, I mean, you've got what we have. I expected the, everything else with excavation point, because of the cost of construction has gone up. You're working with a $40,000 is a pretty old quote. So I expect that will change, but.
Not, I mean, your comments about the apparent trip and falls we've had there is just probably a reminder that we probably ought to have an area, and I would suggest that Stewart Park, obviously, we ought to have an area where we allow functions to happen, and we keep things in the best possible shape, and we have cameras that kind of watch everything, and we, we know, we have an area that is clearly defined that we require entities to have insurance for, and it just seems like it'd be more well-regimented. And one of my favorite constituents reminded me, again, that's why you shouldn't have stuff on North Main and have people tripping in the center of the street and going up and down off stuff. So to me, I would just assume kind of have that be one of our focal places where most activities, I'm not talking about for, you know, I know that Caladium festivals or bigger things will involve multiple sites, but I think we ought to have an area that that's what we do, and we make some investments in there, whether it's in some picnic tables or some more benches, and that that, that park in the center of our town be an area we expend some CRA infrastructure money in.
Removal of the shuffleboard courts is under the Stewart Park agenda in the regular council meeting. Assuming something happens there, is it appropriate for the CRA board to go ahead and say that they'd like to use the funds for?
If you want to make, if you need a motion, I'll make a motion that if the council decides to make any modifications to Stewart Park, including the potential removal of the shuffleboard courts, that those, that that be paid for out of the CRA funds.
Okay, second. Okay, got a motion to second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, saying none, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the CRA? We'll talk to the podium first. Any comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none. We'll declare CRA meeting closed. All right, now we'll go to our regular meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council. We've already had the pledge. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
All right, consent agenda one, A through D.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda one. Second.
We have a motion to second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Saying none, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, we have nothing on consent agenda two. I don't have anything on the presentations or citizens on the agenda, but is, is there anyone that has anything they'd like to bring before town council at this time? Okay, saying none, we'll go to public hearings. First will be first reading on ordinance 2023-01. That's a budget amendment. Two new positions, town planner and building maintenance worker slash janitorial service.
I move to approve on first reading ordinance 2023-01.
Let me see if it's here. I don't have the ordinance to read it, but.
It should be there.
It's there.
Would you let me?
Oh, there it is. Let me go ahead and read it for the record. Ordinance 2023-01, an ordinance of the town of Lake Placid, providing for amendments to the town's budget, semicolon, providing for severance and saving, semicolon, and providing for an effective date. Okay.
I'll second Mr. Sapp's motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any comments from the podium? Saying none, take it to the audience. Okay, hearing none. Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, Phil, at this time, would you like to introduce our
Yes, sir.
Our new employees?
What you just approved, and what you've approved, all this to hire our own planner, first of all. Dana, everybody knows Dana, this is, she's welcomed aboard, and we look forward for the first time to have our own planner. Kind of exciting, exciting time. You have anything you want to add, Dana?
I just wanted to say thank you all very much for the opportunity and for considering me for the role, and I am very, very excited to fulfill the visions that we have as a town, and to come on board and to be able to pour full energy and 100% of my effort and time into, don't tell anyone, but my favorite town in Highlands County. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know Dana has shared in the past that her grandmother lives here in Lake Placid. I assume maybe that's the young lady back there. So we're glad to have her down where her grandmother is.
All right, when is, when is her official start date?
The 27th.
The 27th, okay. All right, we're looking forward to having you on board. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, town council also approved hiring our own maintenance person and everything for the town grounds, Jose Mayo Nada. Stand up. He comes to us from the, basically, we stole him from Highlands County, didn't we? And so you walk into the restrooms now, and they all smell good and nice and fresh and clean. And he's got an amazing attitude about him of, you know, wanting to do a great job. He and his family live here in Lake Placid and have lived in Lake Placid for a long time, and so that was part of the draw of working for the town was to be closer, closer to home. Welcome him aboard as well. Thanks for coming, Jose.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, next is 4B, public hearing of ordinance to convey land.
The summary sets out the reasoning and the philosophy behind it. If you've got any questions, let me know. Basically, Publix gave us primarily a holding pond. They have had some issues arise, and they would prefer to convert our ownership into an easement. It's the pond that serves Dalhall Boulevard, just east of my office. I recommend it being adopted. The motion would be to approve on first reading if you, unless you have questions. This would be ordinance 2023-02. Would that be right?
Yes.
Did you read the title? No, I didn't have it. Here it is. Thank you, Councilman Sapp. Ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance of the Lake Placid Town Council, authorizing the conveyance of town property to Public Supermarkets, Comma Incorporated, semicolon, in exchange for a stormwater draining easement, semicolon, and providing for an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Saying none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Next is 5D1, Lake June Park Pickleball Project.
Mr. Mayor, this contains the actual application to ARPEC, and while council did, and I checked off that council had approved, but council approved pursuing pickleball courts. I don't know that you guys actually approved of a budget and everything to do with an ARPEC application. Going in front of the ARPEC board would be, yeah, January 23rd, approved to pursue pickleball courts on page 98. It would be nice to have the application itself approved and have a council acknowledgement of that.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the application to be submitted to ARPEC, ARPEC on the 16th, as presented in the document. Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Saying none, we'll bring it back, poll the council, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, we go to 5D2, Stewart Park renovation and shuffleboard.
And, Mr. Mayor, this is primarily on the, on the agenda for discussion of removal of the shuffleboard courts. We, I did a pretty good advertisement with the sign, website, surveys and stuff like that, and we got some press. So anybody that may be using the shuffleboard has been well, we've done the best we can. So everybody's had a chance to, to look at it. We've got a quote from Hickey Construction to move, remove it. And I see Mr. Brantley's here. We've got a quote from excavation point. I see Mr. Brantley's here, and he probably has more to say about the trip hazards and things like that, but it is, you know, as you, as people walk across there, and as you've all seen the trip hazard that it presents and everything, for not being, for being an obstacle, it's not being used.
Did we get any comments at all, Phil?
Well, what you're looking at on page 130 was downloaded, and I put a form on the website so that people could have feedback. And that was, that was the comment. Of course, the first one was my test, and then Dennis Solely preferred to see pickleball court, or pickleball court put there. So actually, you've only had one comment from Becky Williams of Conqua Road Northeast actually asking to keep it. Now, that was as of Wednesday, whenever, Thursday, whenever I published the council package.
If I'm not mistaken, either that, that was, that address is a Placid Lakes
Right.
address as well.
Right, yes, 100%.
And that's, that's the only comments I've heard any, from any, anything. I mean, and they could also send web comments that they wanted to, even anonymously, and I haven't heard any, any feedback from any other direction. So that's it, so.
I spoke to four people who were playing shuffleboard the other day in the park, and their concern was they, they like it as a place to play and a place to bring their grandkids in, you know, as an entertainment and exercise venue. I wondered if we could reestablish some shuffleboard courts, maybe at the Lake June complex as well, along with the pickleball courts. We'd have all that in like one place. And if we got some pushback from people that they wanted that, that we could maybe do that, and maybe use, can we use ARPEC funds for that or something like that as well? But, you know, I don't know. But to just get rid of them, you know, they, these people told me that they were not in good shape, and that they bring some stuff and put on it so their discs, you know, go smoother. But it would be nice if we could redo it, but once again, they don't live in the town. They live in Placid Lakes. So if we are looking for just feedback for people that live in our little, a little bit over one square mile area, I don't think we have a lot of people there from that part of the county that's actually using it.
Could have been the same people that.
I, I don't think so, because they didn't seem to be familiar with, with that. But they could be, but at any rate, I, I don't know. I just.
I know, I've seen the time in the past whenever they were discussed, when there were, there was quite a crowd that filled up the old council chambers.
Yes.
But it's definitely dwindled.
Yes, and, and I have not seen, I was actually very surprised to run into people using them the other day. I, I can remember from, from time to time, we'd be having a festival, and there would be people playing shuffleboard there, and then, you know, we were in their way, they were in our way, you know, so. But I have not seen that lately either, so.
They, it was mentioned the possibility of putting a concrete slab over the, and Tal ran for it, is quite experienced at that, and he definitely advised against that. Don't put a concrete slab over it. He said it never works.
That's just throwing good money after bad. No.
It's just something else to trip over. Around the edges. So what are we looking for? Motion to remove the pickleball courts and go with this?
No, shuffleboard courts.
Shuffleboard courts, I mean, shuffle the pickleball in the brain still. Shuffleboard courts? That's a whole nother issue, but yes.
And green space or whatever you might want to do. I mean, my recommendation would be green space to start off with, and, you know, down the road, if you decide you want to put another pavilion in there. But I think the original plan was, the original hope was to allow more space for vendors and things like that during the, during the festivals that were there.
Right. I, I would, I would think we'd want to go with green space at the, as you said, at this point, and then if it, as it develops down the road, if we think that we need a pavilion there, that's another issue. But at this point, I, I think we should probably get rid of the shuffleboard courts and go to green space there for, just if nothing else, to alleviate the trip hazard.
I'll make a motion that we remove the, move the, the shuffleboard courts and go with the apparently Hickey proposal for $2,500 to remove them. And then they'll bring it to grade, and then we'll worry about the sod later. It's probably something the town can handle. We'll get the sod worked out on that, I would think. That, it's not a lot of property.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion from the podium? We'll take it to the audience. Okay, saying none, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the only other thing on the agenda is 5D3 personnel policy.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recommend, recommend that the one personnel policy in here regarding the sick bank be tabled for right now. There was some, I mean, I apologize to council for putting this on the late agenda, but we felt like that we had somebody that may need it. And, but there's some, I, I've already felt bad about giving, giving it to you at the last minute. I feel even worse about going in there scribbling it and saying, okay, but we need to make these changes in the meeting. So we'll just table it and come back. And, as you can see, I like to have all the personnel policies that are in there in a, in a, a list. And we also updated the organizational chart. There again, it's a, it's a personnel matter, you know, but I like to keep council informed, that that is in our personnel manual. We took and put, for no particular reason, Dana would like to be a manager. She stated that right out, right off the bat, and I think it's helped her license in some way. So it made sense to just put her in there and as a planning director. Just because it comes under me doesn't mean they always come and talk to me. A lot of the times, they go and talk to everybody.
So.
But you got to have an organizational chart showing something.
So this organizational chart is what is currently in place?
You know.
It's currently in place.
Is this currently in place?
Well, the, the one that's currently in place does, looking at the little hand up there on, on your sheet, shows planning department as a, we, we never upgraded it from the county. It shows planner coming under the town engineer, and that was, I mean, you don't put county planners, contracted planners under the town engineer, but you did something with the planning anyway, because Joe is the main one that works with the, with the planners. And so, but yeah, that's, that's the organizational chart showing everything as it is right now.
Okay. Because the way I'm looking at this, we had a discussion about two months ago about the code enforcement coming straight under the town administrator, and now I see it's under the police chief.
Y'all had a discussion, but you didn't do any directions.
It's always been under the police.
And it's still there, and it's going to stay there?
And it's still there.
Thank you.
It may evolve, but for right now, that, that's showing what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I know we're not going to approve it, but the basic idea for the, this, what am I going to call it? It says the sick bank is, you're going to provide some flexibility so that if employees wanted to donate some of their sick time or vacation days or whatever, they can, the sum of all of that will, will not be that there'll be additional vacation days or sick days. It'll just be that theoretically It'll just be that theoretically, one employee can say, I've, I've got up to my, whatever it is, ten or twenty set aside. And I'd like to donate five or ten of those to Mr. Smith or Ms. Jones.
And you have to have so much sick leave in order to be able to donate it. In other words, you can't. And there, there will be a, a committee consisting of, of the, of the department heads that are not supervising the employee that'll be determining it. I mean, if you got an employee that, say for example, uses every bit of their sick leave, they've been here five years and they've got eight hours sick leave and they're coming to the sick bank wanting everybody to donate, no. You know, so it recognizes that there can be times whenever it can be abused. But it's also, you know, some of the staff has come to me and are saying, is there anything we can do?
But it, it will not, it will not cause the town any additional financial obligation in the sense that once employee A donates some of his or her time to someone, they won't then be able to relatively quickly regain the time they just gave up, right? Beyond what if they, beyond what if they'd used it?
They'll lose it. They'll lose their time.
Okay. It's not gonna cost, I mean, I'm not trying to be cold hearted, but we aren't going to, there's this, it won't be abused in the sense that it'll just cost the town more and more people will accumulate more and more time and then shuffle it out to, you know, those that don't have it, correct? I mean, and the sum of it'll be the same as it is today.
There's no financial cost. People that have earned it can choose to give it to someone else, gift it to someone else. And they will no longer have it. It'll be credited from employee A's account to employee Z's account. And therefore, A will lose those five days and then Z will get the five days. So there shouldn't be any financial implications.
I just want to make sure that when A gives up those five days, because they were then maxed out, that they then don't automatically then accumulate five days within a matter of weeks or months. In other words, where people are just farming and growing more and more sick time. That's.
The other policy sets limits on what you can, as a matter of fact, we put a ceiling a while back on the, on the.
The accrued days.
The, we, we create even lower ceiling for new hires. So.
I know I'm not articulating it well. I just want to make sure that it isn't that, well, someone gives up some, someone gets to the max and they give up some. Now they can go right back to the max again, you know?
No, you still accrue at your same rate. You still accrue at your same rate. You don't accrue at an accelerated rate. But if, if that's.
Then you get one day for every thirty days worked.
Right.
Okay, it'll take you thirty days to get one day or what, I'm not, I'm just using that as an example. The only thing that I could see is if there's a difference in the value of the days off. That's the only place there could be.
My understanding is currently that there is a cap. And so after a certain period of time, if you, if you don't lose it, you use it. So if you don't use it, you lose it sort of. And I just want to make sure that what we don't do is, okay, people are saying, I've got, I'm at my max. I'll give some of mine away because I'm gonna very quickly get back to my max in the next four or five months. And that we, we start to see us take on additional financial obligations. As long as you all work through and kind of model that out and say, no, that won't be the case. And we're not going to be setting ourselves up for tens of thousands of dollars of additional financial obligation because people that have reached their max give their days and then, then get new days to get to the max.
I see what you're saying. You, you're already maxed. You can't max anymore. So you're giving away hours. You're able to pick up hours you wouldn't be able to get otherwise. I, yeah, I understand your point and I'm not sure what to do about that.
I don't know.
Giving away hours that they're not eligible for.
Right.
In effect. So yeah, it's an odd policy and it's hard to, hard to make it work. And I want to, you have to be careful too, to make sure we're not confusing vacation days with sick days. You have to be sick to be sick and take time off. You can't just get five hundred hours and I don't think, and take a month off before you quit.
I've, I've, I've talked to some people from other cities and towns that do this. They don't use sick time. All they use is vacation time. And that eliminate, it eliminates a lot of that.
I'm pretty sure the county does, just vacation.
So that, that's, I was gonna bring that up. That's something maybe we ought to look into is just use vacation, vacation time and not sick time. Just wanted to bring it up.
Well, vacation, I would follow the same thing. If you max out vacation time, you're gonna still give away hours and then pick up more hours in the back end. So I don't know that this policy will work. I mean, it's a great idea, sharing hours. But if you give away, if you're at five hundred is your max hours and you give away fifty hours to somebody else, you should be capped at four fifty, then not be able to go over that number because you've, you've lowered the top number you can reach. Because if you're giving away fifty and you get fifty back over time, you haven't really done anything. We're just giving away time.
Well, the policy exists under a two thousand and three council that, that passed it. So it, it, it needs updating. And, and some of the, if you go on the website and the employee's page drop down and there's the employee personnel manual, the password there is the town administrator's cell phone number, four, four, one, one, five, eight, one. That's so his folks in China can't download our personnel manual and use it to, for anything.
I'm assuming this wheel's already been invented. I would just encourage y'all to check with some other municipalities, other governmental entities and, and see what's working because someone else that's had it has, and I don't mean this mean about any of our employees, but no matter what you do, someone will figure out how to abuse it. And I just want us to at least try to curtail that to the extent possible.
Well, you had to put this in policy because it was being abused, I'm sure. Someone thinks they're entitled to extra hours or vaca, or sick time. And the private industry, it's subjective, but with government, you have to have it written down. But I didn't even think about your point, Ray, when I was reading this last week, going over the agenda, but.
Well, if, if a person works a job and they, and they accrue a certain amount of vacation time for however many hours they work, like Charlie was saying a minute ago, they still are gonna accrue that because that's part of their employment policy. But in the county, there's a limit to how much you can give and also on the other end, how much you can receive. So my question is, is this going into a bank or is this going to a particular person from time to time? So I mean, that, ours, ours went to a particular person. It would come out and it would say, you know, Nell Hayes is having health issues. She needs some, she's used all of her sick time already, looking for donations. The maximum that we will accept for donation is X amount of hours. And the maximum any one given person can give is X amount of hours. So once that maximum is given, then nobody can give anymore. So.
So the sheriff's office had this kind of policy?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean.
Yeah, that, that would be a good place to look.
The sick bank though is just giving away hours over time. You're not, everyone can still be capped and you're, and you're picking up extra hours in this bank. You haven't really done anything. It, it doesn't make sense to me to do it that way. It's inappropriate. You're.
I'm just telling you what the county does.
If someone's sick and you want to help them out, we can maybe make a decision here at council for each individual. But to set up a bank and create hours, you're, they're kind of ghost hours. Because they're hours you can't get anyway. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to do that.
I would not do it that way. I would do it because that's my only experience, but I would do it in particular cases. And you've already set up a way to determine those cases and make sure that they're valid cases. But, and the person in the county anyway, had to make sure that they had used their total sick leave and, and/or vacation time. I don't remember exactly how it read, but, and then those things went into place. So. And it seemed to, I don't know, as far as I know, it worked well.
Well, and part of, part of the reason why it was pulled was because the ADG software that we, that we have doesn't allow the bank thing. So it has to be, go, it has to go from individual to individuals. So we gotta, we, we have to do the, the entire policy if we're gonna do it and consider it even at all. So it was, it was just, you know, I thought it would be easier to just update it and put it on the agenda. It didn't work that way when we got back looking at it, so.
I think it'd be tough to keep track of because the way my mind works, if someone's giving away hours off their five hundred hours is the maximum person can have. Is that right? The five hundred hours is what I read here? So if someone decides to give away half their time, that person should be capped at two fifty and not be able to get back up to five hundred. Then you're capped and you're giving away your time. It's gonna be tracked by each individual. But if you're already capped, you're already capped. And if you give away time, you're gonna get it back. You're, you made more sense, Ray. It was clear whenever you were explaining it to me.
I, I agree.
But that's not the way it works at the, at the county and a lot of.
You earn what you earn, what, for, for the work that you do.
Up to a certain point and then beyond that point, you can't earn anymore. You lose it.
Yeah, there's.
Right. So if you're, if you, if you're at that point and you'll lose it.
Basically, Greg, it's, it's a.
I don't think you're understanding my point. I don't know how to differently explain it.
I understand your point. I just don't agree with it.
Well, then just, why give hours? Just, if you've already maxed out, you can't get any more hours. Period. You can't get any more hours. That's it. So if you're giving away your hours, then you're picking up more hours again and you can't do that. You're giving away hours and then you're getting those hours back again. You, you can't get hours back if you're already maxed. So you can't give away something if you're already maxed.
It'll just be the way it's written in the person. That's why we're, that's why we want to look at it and revise it or change it.
Who are long-term sick. There's no doubt about that. If we can help them, they've been loyal to the town. We want to help them. The, the sick leave is to keep people who are just sick all the time and take advantage of the system.
Yeah. I think it's important that we distinguish between sick leave and vacation time and that you could give vacation time, not sick leave.
I don't see this being abused, but these are assets of the town, these hours are assets the town has. And we have to be careful not to just give everything away. And I kind of feel like what we're doing right now by giving away hours that aren't essentially hours. If, if, if you're maxed, you have nothing to give unless you take away from your max and you can give that, that lowers your max. But you can't give it and then get that back up again because you haven't really gained anything.
But like I said, it's just how the, the policies are written with the, with the cap in there. And I know for the county, it's up to a certain cap. Once you get below that, you accrue back up to the, whatever their cap is in the policy.
If you use it, yes.
And then you can't give anymore.
If you use it, but you can't give it away. If you give it away and you gain it back, you haven't done anything.
Yeah, you can't.
Well.
And just so council will, will know that I'm not just buying into this thing. Town staff will tell you that, I told them that it sounds to me like with, how much sick leave do I want to? You're, you're trying to decide how much can the town do for this employee, not how much I can do for the employee. You, I can give money or help them out and everything, but you're trying to decide how much the town can do, you know, by giving sick leave. In some respects, I mean, you know, so.
I mean, why give it to an employee? Just do it.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense because anyone who has five hundred hours can afford to give a hundred and get it back over time. Because it's unlikely you're gonna be sick for, for two months. Essentially, what you're giving away is part of your two months and you're getting it back over time. So you might as well just say, we, just, just put a thousand hours in a bank and give it to whomever. Why have different employees give it? Because they're not really giving, because they're gonna get it back anyway. They're not really giving anything.
Well.
We're not gonna make a decision here. It doesn't really matter. I, I don't think.
As, as I say, I gotta table it because it's, I gotta do more.
Need more research.
But I'm, but I'm glad to hear everybody's comments because, I mean, I'll listen back on YouTube and get the transcript and figure out how I can make it better if we make it work. And town staff was really interested in doing something like this for the, this particular employee.
And I'll, I'll just share, you know, I had a daughter that went through a serious thing and with her employer, and again, different scenario. But she had so many paid hours and then after a certain period of time, then, then she got like half her, you know, was, she got paid half her normal salary for another couple of weeks and, but it, it, it kept a little bit of money coming in. It kept her on the insurance. And so I guess my point is there, there could be multiple ways to address this situation because I take it almost, not as, I mean, we all want to make, see some money, but you want to make sure someone is, I think probably the goal is make sure someone for as long as possible is able to stay on the town's insurance and, and all that. So I, I would, when you put this policy together, I would just encourage that town committee to just put some Smiths and Jones, not real people, but Smith and Jones scenarios together and model it on out and see what happens so that there's an example that if Mr. Smith gives Ms. Jones this, you know, at least, I think Greg and I want to hear, how then, how does that affect Mr. Jones long-term? When, when then, does he then accumulate that vacation time or that sick time back, you know?
I mean, since it is on the agenda and I'm not polling council, I mean, this is an open council meeting. If, if we develop such a policy and, and tried, would council, I mean, is that something that we're not interested in as a council? This particular, having a policy like this? Because I mean, if, if it is, there's no use in spending a lot of time on it.
I don't see the use in spending the time on it. It's, it's not to be mean or, I just don't see how it's fair. I don't see how it's fair to the people of the town. I think it's employee by employee and situation by situation. And we can discuss that when the time comes here at council. If we have to put this person on as a consultant and, and find a bracket that he fits where you can keep him on, I don't think anybody would object to that. We're not just gonna ax somebody because they can't come into work after fifty days or five hundred hours. But the, the banking thing just makes my head hurt. I, I just. It doesn't make sense. If we're gonna do it, just give the hours away. Because essentially what you're doing anyway, but you're assigning them to different people, but they're giving away something they're not gonna use or need anyway.
I think it would be important to have that kind of a policy. We are, we, we have a town council and we deal with town funds, but the town exists in the county of Highlands. I think it would be important to look at the Highlands, at least my experience at sheriff's office, but any other Highlands County entities that have this type of a policy and see how they regulate it. Because obviously, they may have more experience in that than we do. And, and there are regulations to it, but I don't think you can keep an employee from accumulating vacation time simply because they gave some of the time they already had to a sick bank or to a, to a, a cause to that effect. Because your, your, your vacation time is part of your contract.
Well, vacation's different than sick leave. Yeah. We're talking about sick leave time, not vacation time.
No, we're, I'm talking, I, I was thinking we were talking about giving vacation days, not sick days.
And there again, it goes back into dealing with our committee and then look researching some of the other county entities and their, and their programs and then come back and.
And when you're doing the research, ask, ask them if they've had any problems with it. Does it cause any, you know, any things that, that, that we should be aware of before we jump right in with two feet?
Yeah, I would think, go ahead and let's do the research and see what we can find out and bring it back to council. And then at that point, decide if it's something we want to do, once we get all the, all the pertinent facts.
Well, why do it under the guise of employees donating? If we're gonna give hours over time, just pick a number and put the hours in a bank and give it away in the future. We're, we're making this.
I don't think that ADG software can do that. That, that's part of the problem with that, that this policy as it exists now.
You can do it one way or the other. You can do it with fifty people donating time or just pick a number and put it in there. It's just what you end up anyway and just open an account with hours in it and you're, you're creating a lot of work unnecessarily. I mean, I have no problem taking care of an employee and donating time, but to do it with all this much, with all this work just doesn't make any sense to me. It's creating a lot of work for people in the office, for employees to keep track of who gave what. And, and even looking at the fifteen to twenty dollar ample, example here you had per hour of employees make different rates and you're only keeping back hours, it just complicates matters. Just. Let's pick a number, throw it in a bank and work off the bank. If the bank gets low, we can add more hours to it later if we need to. Just do it as we need to. It might be once a year, once it'll be five years.
And these concerns might be why that policy in two thousand and three hasn't been used.
Well, there's a lot of hours. That's a lot of sick leave for each person. And we haven't been in a situation, I think, I'm not sure exactly what the situation is right now. I have an idea. And, and we don't want to handicap anybody, but I don't know, in the last, in the last twenty years, we've had to even have this conversation. So it's easy to say it's been this long time and not used. We haven't had to use it. I don't think.
No, we, we never, we never have had the situation come this.
So we can think about it and come back to the next meeting and keep going with it. We're not gonna get anywhere tonight. But, I mean, to do it under this situation just seems cumbersome and unnecessary.
Would council prefer it be vacation time instead of sick leave?
Yes.
Say, look into it and just.
I don't.
Be what?
Vacation time.
Vacation time?
Is there, that, that's a whole nother discussion. Is there a cap on vacation time? Do you have to take it or lose it or do you get paid for it?
There is a cap on vacation time, but the thing about it is with vacation time, you, you have to pay the employee when they leave. So that is, oh, sick leave, I've seen it over in Indian River County in the fire department. They came in and said, all your sick leave is gone, period. That sick leave is not a right.
It's not monetized. Vacation time is monetized.
And sick leave is not always paid dollar for dollar. And sick leave is not always paid dollar for dollar or hour for hour. Like in, in, you can, you had to accrue a certain amount of sick leave, like when I left the Sheriff's Office, I had a certain amount of sick leave that I would have had to have in order to even get paid for a quarter of that. Where vacation time is paid at, at full rate.
Yeah, vacation time is owned by the employee, but vacation in private industry is a bonus. You don't have to pay a vacation. That's a bonus and a contract between, but the, with the state and county workers, I, I would think that once you say it's theirs, it's owned by that employee, and that's something they can donate and give. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yes.
That is a number you can put on it and work something out with it, where they can get their paycheck and hand it over to the guy.
Yeah.
But the sick leave is like, it's just convoluted.
Yeah, I would not do sick leave. I would do vacation.
In light of hearing no other opinion, that's the direction I'm going to.
While we're at this point, the employee that, you know, that, that has brought this forward is fighting stage four council. Alan, do we have an update? How he's doing?
I can't give any specifics, but he's not doing too well yet.
He had some complications arise middle of the night last night, as far as oxygen dropping, and he went for blood work today, and I believe a transfusion, but it, it took a turn for the worse last night.
Yeah, it's, we just need to keep our prayers up for him. But he's, he's a good man. We just hope the best for him, so, okay. Thank you, Alan. Welcome to the family, Dana. Okay, I think that's all on the agenda. Tom Attorney, you got anything?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, go to the department heads. Joe, any updates?
Um, okay, I need to clarify. The water system is running on there, and that's all the years of designing the collection system.
Can you turn your microphone on, Joe?
On. Last week and the week before, we've had progress update meetings with the engineers who are designing the collection systems and the new wastewater treatment plant. Those are all on schedule. We've gone through some of the preliminary designs, had a bunch of questions answered. The one thing that they're still working on is what we're gonna do with our sludge afterwards. So we've challenged them, we need some sort of belt press or centrifuge or something, and that was not included in their plans. That, and I think the Lake June Point Homeowners Association has asked that I come and give them a quick update presentation Saturday morning. I think that'll be held here at Town Hall, and just gonna give them a quick overview of why the project is and where we're at. Granted, knowing there's quite a few questions we don't have answered yet. The Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center Force Main Project has been put out to bid, so we should have bids on that coming in soon for your consideration. And the pipe bursting project, we've contacted someone else at DEP to try to figure out what's going on with that. So they asked us a question. We've responded and have not heard back. So we're, we're trying to figure out how we can get that one out to bid as soon as possible.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for Joe. Have we heard back on the study that I believe it was Panoni was gonna do on Down Hall and Main Street intersection?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they've, they've done their traffic counts. Leah Salz and myself met with them a week or two ago to kind of go over their preliminary findings, and they're kind of trying to wrap up their report and do some renderings, I guess, with their suggestions. And it'll either be next council meeting or the meeting after that, that they'll be here to present.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Police chief? Nothing? Harry? I'll bring it to council. Anybody?
Nothing from me, sir.
Nothing?
Nothing from me.
Nothing? Okay. Let's go to the audience. Anybody have any concerns or? Okay, bring her back. Phil?
Um, no, sir.
Okay. If there's no other business to come before Town Council, meeting adjourned.